Moving on to recognition, Mr. Gilkey.
Thank you. For presentation to the board, we have the September Classified Employee Recognition Award that went to Mr. Al Andrews, Elkhorn Custodian. I'm going to start by reading a statement from Dr. Harris. As our custodian, Mr. Al is a beloved father figure to our students. He's a cheerleader for our teachers and is one of the hardest working people I've ever worked with. He has great pride in keeping our building clean, organized, and presentable. He is always willing to help and never complains. He works with a pleasant attitude and smile. He checks in often with staff to see if he can give assistance. Each morning when I arrive, he comes to greet me and check on things. He has amazing communication skills and works with integrity. He enjoys being around children, and even during his own lunch break can be found talking to students in the cafeteria. Last school year, he relocated out of the area and now lives in our way and still is dedicated to be a part of the Elkhorn family. We were lucky enough, Dr. Bull and I, to get out to Elkhorn and present that award during lunch, so it was really cool to celebrate that with, I think, some kindergartners. So he had a cafeteria full of kindergartners that were cheering him on.
And how'd something do what they were cheering for?
Yeah. A few of them knew what was going on. And we were able to comment on the state of the building and just how awesome it looks. So that was a great opportunity, and we are thankful to get to present that to him.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to item D, MSBA Delegate Report. Darren.
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. A new school year means a first stress test for your budget, actual enrollment, transportation miles, salaries, benefits, and fixed costs can shift facts. So when do you amend it? MSBA Senior Director of School Finance Linda Quinley explains what to watch for in the first month of the new school year.
This time of year, it is really in my mind about a first good budget amendment to clean up what you thought might be the case in June, because now we have some final pieces of data that help us do that. Those being, we know what our final assessed valuation is, we know what our tax rates are, and by the end of September, we'll know what our membership count is for the fall, and we start getting some of those big pieces that then tell us what revenue is going to really look like for the year.
Linda says that districts need to communicate budget issues with the community to make the process understandable.
I think that's critically important. It's always time to tell your story, but right now, sharing an understanding around local revenue, I think, is the biggest community message, because we are seeing some high increases in assessed valuation. That immediately makes people think their taxes are going way up. So helping your community understand that the Hancock Amendment is there to protect them from that, and how that impacts the net change in their property taxes is huge. I think also helping the community understand and pay attention to what might happen after the state legislature gets done with the work on the formula, and then, more importantly, even just because of the variety of lines, paying close attention to federal program dollars, particularly in high-need districts, because the higher-need districts get the larger amounts of federal dollars.
And this says there are many reasons that districts of every size should take part in long-range financial planning.
I'm a huge fan and proponent of simple but clear long-range financial planning, and it's not something a lot of districts have done. Larger districts tend to do it, but I believe that every district, every size in Missouri, needs to have a very simple, it doesn't have to be overly complicated, long-range financial planning model, because our commitments are growing based on statute and a variety of things, but our revenues are flattening and/or declining, and so long-range financial planning is just going to set a board up to know, in collaboration with leadership, where and when you might hit some bumps in the road, so that you can be proactive and plan for those ahead of time.
Linda and her team will have a School Finance for School Board Members Workshop during the MSBA Annual Conference, as well as multiple concurrent sessions on finance. Speaking of annual conference, registration is still open for the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, to be held October 23rd through the 25th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, the Education Expo, and another great lineup of general session speakers. Pre-conference sessions start on Wednesday, the 22nd, with the AI in Education Symposium. MSBA's Director of Digital Initiatives, Mark Henderson, says that the event has something for everyone regardless of your AI expertise or experience level.
AI is transforming education right now. Are you prepared to lead the changes in your district? At this one-day event, we'll explore how AI supports learning and how school leaders like you can lead with confidence. We'll kick off with Kim Carr, co-founder and Executive Director of Digital for Good and I Can Help, a nationally recognized leader in digital wellness and online safety education. Then you'll experience expert sessions led by practicing educators, technology professionals, legal experts, and student voices covering AI implementation in classrooms, cybersecurity, policy development, career readiness, and more.
Thursday, the 23rd, is filled with workshops and events for new board members and board secretaries, plus timely sessions on finance, parliamentary procedure, and more. The Fall Delegate Assembly will be held on the Friday of Annual Conference. The Delegate Assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, anything further, Darren?
Just a reminder, I think we all got registered for the conference, so we saw should we all be good to go before we go 14. You guys ready next one?
Next up, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Bull.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it pleases the board, I'd like to just present some updates from around the district. So... There we go. So we had a great kickoff to the school year between the New Teacher Week convocation, back-to-school events, I think, set a really positive tone for an incredible start for the district. Heard lots of good stuff from parents, teachers, staff members, and the principals. It's been a really exciting start, so that's been a good way to kick off the year. Positive feedback. We have our first cabinet and principal meeting on Wednesday, so we'll talk about how back-to-school started, our retreat, things that we may want to adjust for next year as it's fresh in our mind, just so we can kind of put those things down as notes and see how we may want to adjust as we transition, you know, through December to next year, why it's still fresh. Fall activities are underway. I've seen many of you at some of the activities. Home events started, I think, last week. We have some home events this week. Soccer has a tournament going on, they actually play tonight, and then I know volleyball had a game last week, I think they do this week as well. We've added an extra football game. I believe it is October 3rd, but you'll have to double-check the activities calendar for me. So Raytown had some gas issues underneath their facilities, so they don't want to blow up the whole town, so they've moved their home football games to the away venues, so we'll be hosting an extra home football game. I think it's on the 3rd. I see some head knobs. Yeah. So come out, join us in any of those activities. Parents love seeing you. The kids love seeing us cheering them on. It's really a fun way to kick off, especially while the weather's still nice. It gets colder, it's a little harder to get out some of those soccer and football games and enjoy it, so it's nice to get out there. First View by First Student Transportation, so I'm going to initially just present this a little bit, just talk about it. If Scott has, Mr. Gilkey has anything to even like to share, he's welcome to. So this is something we've kind of talked about through our First Student. So this is something that comes along with our contracts, and so this is just a district dashboard. There's both the dispatch and district personnel side, so the schools can see where the buses and students are anticipated times, and then there's the parent side. So we've been slowly trying to roll this out. You know, at the beginning of the year, routes can be a little wonky as we transition. We see what students are wearing, how long things are taking. So now that that's pretty steady, we're going through implementing this. There's always going to be, you know, what we like to say, you know, your rollout bumps and bruises on go-live for things like First View, and so there will be some of those things, my bus isn't showing up, something like that. But we'll work through that as a district. I know Mr. Gilkey's worked with Kim Green and First Student quite a bit on some Zooms on what this looks like. Really, it's for the parents and then the district and Kim Green to really identify. It's not really something that we want to put an extra step or something else to monitor on our principals, but we'll give them the heads up on how to use it in case they do. But at the end of the day, their lives are hectic enough. Really, this is for Kim, Mr. Gilkey if he needs to, and then for First Student and the parents really to look at that. So we'll transition to that. There'll be some bumps and bruises. We'll get there through the way, we'll get there together, but I think overall, it will be a good addition to what we provide to our families and community. So looking forward to that. Mr. Gilkey, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just say, the goal is just to provide some increased clarity in transportation for our parents through that process. The big thing, I think, from the beginning is, obviously, it's a web-based solution, but troubleshooting doesn't run through the district, so parents having issues will contact First View directly with issues with the app. So it really, on our end, will be a tool for building principals to use, or myself at times if there's questions on transportation, but primarily, it'll be for First Student as they work with parents to provide some clarity in transportation, things like that. So at this time, it doesn't seem like it will provide or increase much in terms of workload for us on the administration. It should be a tool that's beneficial to our parents without much increase on workload for the district, so.
Is that available, like, for student activities? I'm just thinking as a parent, like, if my daughter was cheering an away football game, it would be nice to see, oh, they're going to be at the high school at about 10:30, so I know I need to be out there so I can pick up my kid.
You know, I don't know. That'd be your question?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know the answer to that. I know that they talked about having pre-built routes in, and that parents didn't give you that in real time, so I don't know. That's not a conversation that we've had about doing that with athletic trips or activity trips.
It might be helpful for coaches who meet their athletes or students, you know, picked up on time.
As a parent, I would have loved that.
As a coach, I would have loved that.
I'm thinking of everybody here.
I have, I have the kickoff district implementation meeting next week with them, so I'll be able to get some more information on that.
Thank you. And then Summer Capital Projects, so wrapping several of those up. We're still waiting on the air or the roof at Central Office, so in order to do that, they're going to have to shut down our air conditioning for about five days, and so they're trying to wait till we get later in the fall, when we're not going to have one of those 85-degree day bumps, and then there's all kinds of humidity in there. But they do have their, they do have the supplies now. We're just waiting for there to be a clear window where it's going to stay clear and not raining for them to do that, so still pending there. High School Park and Lot Updates, so those are initially done. Mr. Barry and I walked the site, and then we walked the site with the company that performed the updates. There's some spaces that we're not happy with, just with the quality of the finish, and there's some spaces that are great, and so Mr. Barry has worked with them on coming back and replacing some of those and maybe doing some pro bono extra work while they're here on some spots that probably should have been updated anyways, just for clearing out that mess, so stay tuned with that. It still has to be done, but they've done a very good, they've done a very good job of being responsive. They were kind of crunched there late. You know, we had that issue where it would rain, three days heat, rain again, and so we had some issue where that got delayed, and then got crunched trying to get it all done before school and staff returned. So just some quality issues that they're aware of, we made them aware of, they plan to come back and rectify those things for us, so just stay tuned on that as we move forward on those. And then again, as they said in the board report, MSBA Congress is a reminder, October 23rd through 25th, lots of things going on there. Once they get an agenda with actual sessions laid out, I'll share those with you guys. I may highlight some ones that would be good. I know Tracy White and I attended the finance one last year. It was great. It can be, it can get very long, but there's some very good high-level things, and then as we sit in there together, we had some good conversation on what this could mean for us. I think that's even more important. You know, we had our financial planning meeting last month. I think that was really good. It's really good for even people that are in school that do it every day, just for tutorial, but I think it's good setting up long-term, and this will be another thing, looking at legislative things that are coming along the way, some of the special sessions happening now, how that can impact us now and down the road, but there's lots of other good sessions, too. I'll highlight some of those for you. Some advice that I always gave is be careful of what you attend and look who's presenting. So sometimes you see some from vendors, and it becomes a very good sales pitch, and those can get very long, and you realize very early that it's a sales pitch. So just always look at who's presenting. Sometimes there's really good ones that are presented by a district and a vendor. You just want to be careful if you look at a specific vendor, that doesn't just become a sales pitch. So I'll share those with you. I can highlight some. We can talk about if there's some we want to go together. The opening ceremony last year was great. The keynote speaker was really good, so that's always a good one, you get a lunch out of it. So as that comes out, I'll share it with you, if there's specific sessions you want to go to, I'll be down there. We can kind of meet up on some of those and chat about what it is we're learning and collaborate on this. So that's all I had, Mr. President. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Bull?
Do you mind, Dr. Bull, and it may come up later in the meeting, but could you just give an update on how things are going with the cell phone policy? I mean, I've seen pretty positive implementation myself, but could you just speak to that?
Yeah, so I know that some teachers and parents have expressed very positive things on Facebook, so it's actually one of the topics that we're going to meet at our First Cabinet Admin meeting on Wednesday, something we want to chat about, what they're seeing. I'll be honest, I expected there to be a lot more buzz around it, and I think everyone has really bought into it. I think the teachers are doing a job of monitoring and monitoring at an exceptional level. I think we're handling it when it comes to us. I think kids understand the expectation, and I think the schools and the principals did a great job of communicating this early enough that it wasn't a surprise to anyone, and because you're not seeing the issues, I think they're doing a good job of being consistent. Now, that may blow up in my face when we meet on Wednesday and they say things are going crazy, but usually if that's happening, I've heard about it by now, and you guys probably have too. It doesn't mean that nobody's been disciplined because of it. It doesn't mean that no one will be upset in the future, but to this point, during what we're still in, which is the honeymoon phase, I think it's going to be a little bit.
I would just say to that, I was in a high school today. Granted, it's a small, very small district, and their referrals are down from like 40 this time last year to three, and they said they attributed it to the new cell phone policy that's being followed statewide, so I thought that was probably.
Yeah, and I think, I've heard some great things that are happening around the district that are either supporting this during some of those dead times. You know, like, I know Dr. Hartman and her trivia team during the lunch period got beat pretty bad by some of the other students, but they're doing funny things during the lunch period, like having a trivia or having things like that to keep the kids engaged so they don't, not bored and twiddling their thumbs. You hear a lot more voices in the hall, which is great. They're talking to each other instead of looking down and having head-on collisions in the hallway. So there are lots of things that I think that are going on, that our buildings have taken on the challenge to further engage our students, and I think students are now recognizing what some of their really good friends' actually voices sound like, not just what their text looks like. So I think, I think it's been well-received overall. I think it's having a positive effect on our buildings. We'll see how we continue after we get to that honeymoon phase.
All right, moving on, discussion items. First up is Career Center Building Update. Mr. Rudy.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I was going to share some updates from the Career Center, some end-of-year data from last year that we've been compiling, and then some progress as far as this year's going, and some updates, and keep you updated on all the great things happening over at the Career Center. First thing, one to pay attention to is the post-secondary placement data. So every year, the state requires schools to do follow-up data for their graduating seniors from the year before, so this data reflects the students that graduated in 2024. And so what we're looking for as far as positive placements as the Career Center is, we're looking for students that are continuing their education in the field they were in, entering the workforce, the field they're in, or in the military. Our goal is to try to be around 80%. So I have up here our sending schools data of how many graduates and then where they're at as far as the placement went for that, for last year, for the 2024 kids. You can see we're right around that 88 or that 78% mark. The year before was 78.6, so almost to 80%. Love to be at 80%. You're never probably going to be at 100%, just not feasible. I always say sometimes learning what you don't want to do is just as valuable as learning what you want to do. And then the other thing, too, not reflected in this, as far as the placement data goes, one of the, I think, sometimes that stigma that comes attached to the Career Center is just for kids that want to start working. So I would say of this, in the last three or four years, about 50/50% of the data has been kids continuing their education and kids entering the workforce. So we are a center and we're a school that, you know, appeals to all kids regardless of what your future holds for you. So about, you know, roughly around 50% of kids are going to continue their education, 50% are going to enter the workforce, which is great. Next up is our industry-recognized provincials. We call them IRCs, and so an industry-recognized provincial is a certification or a license that's portable, that students can earn, that shows that an individual has the skills or knowledge to enter that workforce. These are kind of what separates us from every other outside learning opportunity, so our kids all have the opportunity to earn an IRC. And this is, I haven't broken down by program, how many were earned in each program. Some programs, you can earn multiple IRCs, which is great. The more you have, the more marketable you are. Some of them are a little bit more difficult to earn, so some of them, we don't know, we still don't know yet, because you have to wait until they're a certain age to test. Sometimes they get tested and get pushed back. But as of last count, we had 328 total IRCs and TSA's earned from last school year, which is up just like a handful from the year before, which is good. We're always looking for different IRCs for our kids to take, because again, kind of a point of why we're doing what we do is to show employers and to show schools that our kids are capable and ready to enter the workforce. The other thing, too, I want to highlight, we keep track of all of our kids' work-based learning hours, and so as you can see, we had 14,000-plus work-based learning hours this last year, so that's kids out in the field getting hands-on experience through a variety of different activities, whether it be internships, field trips. So kids are seeing the benefit, and they're getting exposed to what the industry is going to provide for them and what's expected of them when they leave us. Next one, something that was new last year, went away for, during COVID. Further, our Perkins money, the federal money, there's always something attached to it, you know, as far as accountability, and so we have Perkins performance levels that we're being held accountable to, and so we have these stuff right here that they do for the secondary level. So that first one's the four-year graduation rate, which you can see as a district and a consortium, we're above where we need to be. You know, like, we're good math. As a district, we're below where we need to be for the state proficiency level for that, but as a consortium, we're good. The one, that Forest One, the non-traditional program concentration, what that basically means is, do we have genders in fields that are, as a whole, represent 25% less of the workforce? So you're thinking like males in nursing or females in automotive. So are we pushing those, pushing those industries on all of our students, not just like the gender-dominated sections of that? So the state has a goal of about 25%. We're below at both the district and the consortium level, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple slides, kind of how we're addressing that and ways we can get that number up. And then attain post-secondary recognized provincial. So as a district, almost 40% of our kids are our concentrators earned an IRC, and as a consortium, 30%. And you might say, well, hey, Ben, on the last slide, you said we had like almost 400 IRCs earned. Why is only 40%? So a concentrator, all these students that are including this data are kids that have at least two hours in a CTE program strand. So you might be a student at the high school and take a couple of business classes, and now you're a concentrator, and so you never, you never take an IRC. So that's why the kind of expectations are a little bit lower, because the state knows and the government knows that we'll never have 100% of our kids taking an IRC, because a lot of times, they just happen to be what they call accidental concentrators, that they happen to take two classes that were in the same trend. But even because, even besides that, though, we are sitting good as a district and as a consortium as far as where we want to do with those numbers. And then again, I'll talk a little bit more about how we can address that Forest One, one that's pretty low for us. Current enrollment right now for the year, we're sitting at 211, which is a little bit more than where we were at last year. So we're fully staffed this year, which is great. We have all of our programs up and running for the first time in three years, so, which is awesome. So the more, obviously, you have the opportunity for more kids, and then as these go on, we get more enrollment. So I'm very, very excited about our staff. My predecessor, my boss now, told me when I took the job, the most difficult thing was going to be was that you're going to have a lot of turnover in your first couple of years, and he was not lying. So we have some retirement, so getting these spots filled has been a task, and I feel like we've done a great job of, have some exceptional hires and some people I think are going to be around for a long time. So, you know, as, you know, these programs, a lot of it, you know, the success of it depends on the quality of our educators that we have and our instructors that we have, and so right now, I think we're in a very good place, and I think we have a lot to be excited about in the future. So I expect those numbers to go up, and hopefully, we'll see increased numbers in our enrollment in those programs. Moving forward, so just some things, kind of like what we're going to be working on for this year and just in the years to come. One of our, you know, we, you know, we rely heavily on recruitment, so from our sending schools and the high school. So doing our shadow visits, doing site visits, marketing our programs, so getting out, I go to, I go to just about every school and do some kind of off-campus learning activity, day or night, talking about the Career Center, about our programs and what we have to offer. Partnerships, we have some great partnerships with industries in our area and our sending schools, so which allow our kids those opportunities to complete internships, and then also help us on our shadow visits, and then also with our advisory board meetings, we have a lot of people come in from outside that come in, and those are, those people are very, very important to us, because our instructors are very, are great at what they do, but they need to know what's, what the current industry's trends are. So that's where we get the data, like, hey, these are the new standards, or hey, this is the equipment we're using now. And so those are very vital for us to keep our programs sustainable and moving forward. Program improvement, so I'm going to talk a little more about Skills USA on the next slide, just looking for different grant opportunities and PD for our instructors. All of our, you know, our instructors that we've hired, they've all come from industry, so they don't have that teaching background, which, you know, it's like, hey, well, I've, I have all these years of experience as, you know, electrician or automotive, but trying to teach that to a 16, 17, 18-year-old kid is completely different. So giving them those supports, that ongoing supports, and kind of helping them along as they go, and reflecting and making them understand that nothing's going to work perfectly, and educational world is just completely different than the business world as far as things go, and they've done a good job of that, and owe a lot to our PDC and our instructors like Mr. McBe that have been here for a while to kind of help them along with that, kind of like, hey, don't really need to worry about that bag you need to worry about. So it's kind of like, it's nice to have that guy. And then for us, looking, always looking for expansion opportunities. Right now, our Skills Trades programs are all, are very popular and full and have waiting lists, so we're always looking for ways, maybe are there some other Skills Trades programs we can get in there? You heard them talk on the board report video about AI. Well, there's no AI in Skills Trades, and so I think kids are seeing that, there's a lot more potential for opportunities in those Skills Trades programs. So what are some ways, maybe we can get some more Skills Trades opportunities for all of our kids, because those jobs will not be replaced by AI, because they cannot do the things that Skills Trades people do. And so that is kind of what we're working on for this year, just making us, everybody aware of all the great things that we have. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight some of our very, very, very successful students from last year. So last year at the state championships, we had six kids that earned state championships, two silver medals and five bronze medals, and we had two kids that were able to go on to nationals and to compete. The student there in the middle, Madeline Rockmore, she ended up third place in drop skill demo, so she was a state medalist, and she was also the Missouri State Breaking Traditions Award winner. So as I talked, that Perkins data I showed you, she's a, was an HVAC student, so she's a perfect example of that. Just because you are a gender and maybe not that female in a HVAC program, you can still do it and do great things. So her and Mr. McBe and myself got to go to the governor's mansion last April, and she got to receive the award, and so she was the only one, it's one, one person wins that award for the state, so it's quite the honor for her. And then in the middle there and on the left, Mason McConnell, he is, he was a national champion in motorcycle service technology. I think, can't really tell in that picture on the bottom there, I think he was surprised as anybody, so, but that was quite an honor, and he was a national champion. So he was a junior last year, he's in our, obviously in our automotive program, and he's a senior in the chair at Lawson. So we are extremely proud of our kids that competed, and as Mr. McBe said, we were the only school in the state of Missouri that sent to the nationals and made both places, so it's a pretty, pretty good thing for our kids. And then last thing, I was going to call up one of our kids, Adrian Crawley. So Adrian is a senior Excelsior student in our automotive program, and she was elected as a Skills State USA Officer this year, so that is our CTSO at the Career Center, and there are over 11,000 kids or members statewide at Skills USA, and she was one of seven people elected to represent. to represent. She gets the privilege of going to the state and national levels to advocate for our CTE programs. She is an awesome kid and just wanted to make sure if I got to see her and the graduate for that. So pretty amazing honor.
Congratulations.
Another student that we have in a male tradition dominated profession. So, and so kind of like to hit on that, like kind of wrap up, like definitely want to, you know, those things are something we need to focus on. Just kind of having, you know, having those students come with me when we go to those schools has been great because, you know, it's one thing, it's kind of like working with your own kids. It's one thing for you to tell them, but when they hear it from somebody else or another student, it means a little bit more. So having those students, those great examples of people that are in our programs that are doing great things. I think it shows like, hey, that they have the confidence to do this one, too. And at that time, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Yep.
All right. Next up is approval of facilities and grounds program evaluation. Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. I'm expecting a round of applause, just like Mr. Ruby got after this figuring program evaluation. You can start that applause for him, Mr. Ruby. If it pleases the board, just like to present the facilities and grounds maintenance program approvals. We'll kind of go through here. If you have questions that pop up, please feel free to ask. At the end, I'll give you the opportunity to ask those as well. Kind of the context behind the facilities and maintenance grounds program is really to keep our buildings and grounds safe, clean, and in good working condition. So that way the teachers can focus on teaching and the students can focus on learning. So a lot of those things happen behind the scenes. Anthony Berry, the maintenance director and myself spend a lot of time talking on the phone and most of that time is not between eight to three or eight to five. So a lot of that's happening after hours behind the scenes when those things are going on. But really, their priorities, their key priorities are what they're trying to focus on through that program. Prevent expensive emergency repairs by staying on top of regular maintenance and preventative maintenance. Make buildings' equipment last longer, which they've done a great job of. We can talk about. Meet safety and accessibility rules and keep our schools looking clean and professional. I will tell you, it's a lot easier to keep a new or renovated building looking clean than it is an older building. Because it's easier to see when things pop up. I think we're learning that over at Lewis, right? Dr. Thompson, going to start a new year and a new buildings. Great.
Very great.
As we talked about, like in our financial planning meeting earlier, you know, some things moving forward that we'll address later, it's just that we know that they're doing a good job because we have several HVAC components throughout the district that are well beyond end of life. So when you're looking at the middle school, you know, those are 20-year pieces of equipment. We're going on year 25. Same thing at the high school. So you have your issues, your issues that pop up. We try a regular maintenance of those. I know it can get very frustrating sometimes when those things aren't working perfectly. But in the long run, if you look back at how long we've made those systems last, that way we can focus those dollars in other ways. They've done a good job of maintaining those and trying to do that preventative maintenance. And some of those things, we're having to go out and find used or retired pieces of equipment to get replacement parts off of. So that's just kind of how you're working as you're getting older machines. So key objectives of the program, again, that regular maintenance part, being responsive to principals, being responsive to the district, trying to get as much done as a summer when there's less staff and students around. That can kind of provide some opportunities, both to get things done, but opportunities for things to go wrong. You know, you have, our maintenance and custodial department really consists of about 40 people. You have nine people in maintenance and you have about 31 in custodial. Those custodial positions, as we learn every month, turn over quite a bit. And that's just because of the entry pay where it's at. So that would be something that we want to try and focus on in the future, but that's something that everyone is dealing with, with those positions. But they do an amazing job. If you go around to our buildings before school started and even since, they look amazing. They look fantastic. From our brand-new buildings to our oldest building is probably our high school and our middle school now, and they look fantastic as you walk through those. So as you see those people, please congratulate them, thanking for the work they do, both before, during, and after school. Some key goals for this year for both maintenance and custodial, just having assigned checklists and completing those. So looking at, in September, looking at heating and cooling, October plumbing, November lighting, December roofing. So Mr. Berry and his team try and create checklists so they can go through those either right before the season when they get used a lot, right afterwards, or historically when we've seen issues. Really the thing that we see a lot, the issues that we see a lot really happening during those extreme temperatures. So, and even in our newest buildings, as well as our older buildings, when you're looking at that last week of July and those first couple of weeks of August when it's 105, it's hard to keep up and you see condensation issues happening. The other thing that you have that we struggle with, that we try and get ahead of, and it's hard to predict and hard to address, is that these systems are built in these huge facilities to maintain those facilities when they're full of people. And so when you take those people out of there, those systems are still flushing in clean air all the time, but when you don't have those bodies moving around, creating those BTUs or those temperature from those bodies, that air conditioning's not kicking on to push that humid air that it's bringing in and out. And so those are issues that you've seen or you may hear about as we come back in those July and August months, is we don't have the people in there moving around to kick those AC on, but those dampers are still pulling in fresh air because that's what they're supposed to do, but they're bringing in humid air without AC to push out. So those are things that, as those areas prop up, we try and be proactive and get ahead of those. But I think every year, from the time Dr. Everett was at the high school, you find different areas of the building that those dampers haven't been fixed. And so it's humid here, so we try and adjust that. And so it's always, you try and set it up, but you don't know what the next area is going to be. Because you want those systems working as efficiently as possible. You want to be bringing in that fresh air. But it's also being able to combat that when a system's built to have 1,000 people in the building and there's 10, or a lot of those stores stay cold. So that's something that we continue to try and address every year. So there would be an opportunity for growth there. Data source indicators of success, so maintenance and custodial completed about 2,600 work orders. Those aren't the emergency things that pop up where we don't even have time to put in a work order. Those aren't the issues when we have a fire alarm go off in the morning, either because of a steam or because of a gas. Those aren't the issues where there's a hole in the sidewalk or there's snow and ice. There's all kinds of things that happen that we're responsible of. The day before convocation, Mr. Kimsey and I and Mr. Berry met at the high school cafeteria at 9:00 PM before convocation because there's a snow against us, right? As I was talking to Dr. Hart. So those are things that are happening all the time. There's not work orders to measure those, but our people are very responsive all of those hours and they do a good job of running that system and trying to be as preventative and responsive as possible when they can be. Always your instrument, though. Completion of roof audits, goal this year that we're trying to do. So we really want to have a good idea so we can plan, you know, let me quickly talk about it, just plan financially ahead for creating a, and talk about it here, just a preliminary facilities and grounds annual maintenance plan. So here's the roofs that are in the worst condition, here's the ones that are in the best condition, planning out five to 10 years, when do we need to look at replacing these or refinishing those. You know, same thing when we look at our field, same thing when we look at our tracks, same thing when we look at our PAC, different HVAC systems, lighting. So we really want to go through and create a preliminary facility and grounds maintenance plan that helps us get on track of how we can do those things regularly so they're not popping up. And then maybe, once we get through the strategic planning process this year, next year, going through more of a mid to long-term facilities plan again, now that those buildings are built. Now how do we maintain our facilities and plan for, you know, plan for the maintenance of those, the replacement of those, the repairing of those as we move forward? So we have a plan for that so we can be more proactive and less reactive. And then just always estimated replacement cost of key items. And those are some of the things that we just discussed. How does the program meet student needs? Again, all these things that we're doing, that we're talking about are behind the scenes. So if you're not noticing it, if you're not hearing about it, that means it's working. If you're not getting the call at 8:00 PM, that's good because it means one of us are and we're being responsive to it. And so those things are happening in our district. And so those are good. We want this teacher to be able to focus on teaching and the learners to be able to focus on learners. And so all those things happening behind there, recognizing people like Mr. Al at Elkhorn is a key piece of that. Strengths of the program, again, we have the new upgraded facilities at Lewis, Cornerstone, Elkhorn. So it's really keeping an eye on those, maintaining those, being very preventative when it comes to preventing things from happening. And when things do happen, being proactive in it, especially when they're in those first-year warranties and trying to get it up to speed or up to expectation while it's still on someone else's dime. And then being, trying to respond to needs on the new ones or the older ones and be proactive in replacing those as the opportunity rises. Again, areas of improvement and focus, again, we're always trying to, you know, we have some older systems, specifically at middle school and high school, that they're older equipment, but we have newer systems that overlay and control those. Sometimes those don't talk and work well together. So those are things that we need to start planning on. We've had discussions in the last month or so about when can we start planning on how we replace those. You know, when you look at a middle school HVAC, in today's dollars, it's $5 million, right? And three years from now, it's $7 million. But there's always opportunities along the way. There's a new, I was just talking to Snyder Electric, there's a new grant program where they'll reimburse you 40% or 50% of that, which is great, you know, cuts the cost down. Well, we don't have $3 million this year, but we need to be planning out what that's going to be because at some point, that's going to have to be done. So that's where we come up with that facilities and maintenance plan so we can build that into financially what we're trying to do. And then recommendations, things that we need to do in the coming year or in the coming years. So upgrade agent, heating, and cooling equipment, which we've talked about. Continue investing in our roof repairs as we can. So we're on a preventative maintenance where they're going to come around each year and look at those, patch places that need to be patched. But we have about $10 million in roofs in our district that we need to start replacing. So we started with central office because it was the most needed and it was the smallest. We had the funds to do that. Now we need a plan for how we're going to move forward and start getting those things replaced so we're not just patching all the time. Enhance staff training on the new HVAC monitoring systems. So as we get these systems, as we learn where the bugaboo's are, making sure that we're trained on those things and how to respond and try and set those things up so we're ready for those extreme low or high temperatures. And then maintain a strong preventative maintenance schedule for all of our facilities. So with that being said, I recommend the board approve this program evaluation. And I'm welcome to answer any questions.
This time I entertain a motion to approve the facilities and grounds program evaluation. First by Jill.
Second.
Second by Brett. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mark.
All right, here are none. All those in favor? That's a 7 to 0. All right, last item up is approval of food service program evaluation. Mr. Gilkey.
Thank you. For consideration, the board, I would like to present the food service program evaluation. So as we move into this context, obviously, we're looking at our food nutrition services and how we serve our students in that manner, primarily through our breakfast and lunch program. But we have other programs that exist, like after-school dinners and things like that. So really what we're evaluating there is our ability to provide that, provide those nutritious meals to our students in a way that's fiscally responsible while also providing our students choice and things that they enjoy eating and making sure that we are doing things that we can to support both of our students and families. So I'm going to get to program goals and objectives. I have, we have a rating in there. Excellent. I just want to highlight that, I think. So that is not to say that we're going to sit on our hands and not do anything, but this is a program that's running really effectively for the district, both in terms of meeting regulation or regulatory requirements at the state, local, and federal level. It's also a program that annually has been operated in the black for the district and allows us to spend money specifically within food service and do things like pay for breakfast or breakfast and lunch during testing windows. So the program has operated in a way that we have had funds to do those types of things. And we're providing student choice. We're doing a lot of good things. There's things that we would like to see continue to improve, but we also have a number of employees either directly for the district or with Airmark that are doing a great job. And it's a program that is effective for the district. So as we get into that, program goals and objectives, we want to continue to increase our student participation. We'll see that that has been the case. Maximize our students' access to free and reduced meals. I'm not going to read this word for word the whole way, so don't worry. I'm just specifically going through those. We want to provide a variety of student choice nutritious options that are sustainable in operation. Specifically, that means, right, like, we can't just serve everything at the cost of being able to run a fiscally responsible program. Meet USDA, DESI, and local requirements. Maintain fiscal responsibility, then meet regulatory requirements, and minimize uncollectible student meal balances. And we'll kind of hit on that as we go. So data sources, really looking at our student participation, that was up, and I think it's in your report, up comparative to the 2023, 24 review, up 13% for us in breakfast and 8% in lunch. We're above the national average in both of those programs for breakfast and lunch in student participation. Our free and reduced numbers have maintained relative stability. We see a pretty big decrease from elementary to middle school and secondary. So we'll kind of hit on that as we go to. In terms of our student involvement in the program, where students participate, Airmark's done a really good job. We've talked about this in running what they call limited-time offers. I think of that like McDonald's and the McRib. Like, the McRib's not super popular if you run it all the time, but when you run it periodically, it really drives interest. And so Airmark's done a really good job with that, which has been great. We talked last week, or sorry, last month, about recognition of several of our cafeterias in Clay County Health Awards. And so we continue to meet things there. Specifically of note that I learned, and why a couple of our kitchens didn't meet that, had nothing to do with our food service kitchens, but refrigerators throughout the building, even in classrooms, that maybe had like unpasteurized eggs in them that somebody had brought. And so it had nothing to do with our actual food service, but like, we found out that those are things that we have to abide by throughout the building, even if there's never any contact or crossover with our food service kitchen. So that was interesting thing that I learned through this process. Again, from a fiscal standpoint, we continue to operate in the black. And so that's been a great thing. Effectiveness, again, as we look through the program of what's our student participation? How is it impacting the school financially? Are we doing the things that we want to do in terms of serving nutritious meals to our students? Those are all things that are running really effectively. How we meet student needs, and we've done several things really creatively throughout the district, specifically with breakfast and getting kids different opportunities to get breakfast, whether that be second opportunity breakfast that happens after the school day starts, or grab-and-go meals. I know we've had, I've had conversations with Rachel at Airmark about some options throughout the district, just to continue to highlight that, to make sure that our kids that have the ability to eat breakfast or want to eat breakfast, that we make it as convenient as possible for them to do that. So they're starting that day, they're starting their day with their stomachs full as they head into the classroom. So those are things that we have done a really good job of and want to continue to explore the things that we can do to make sure that we're giving students those opportunities. Our strengths in the program are things that I would say are strengths. We have right now really good working relationship with Airmark, which is a benefit to us and our kids. And we want to make sure that, not that it has to be Airmark, but that whoever we're working with in any contracted capacity, whether it's student transportation or food service, that from a, from my perspective, CEO, that we're doing everything we can to maintain positive relationships there to the benefit of our kids. So we think that's a strength right now. Again, financial stability has been good. Facilities and equipment, we've seen a number of updates across the building or across the district. Specifically, we can look at like our development with Lewis, the new school there. The kitchen there was paid for through food service funds because that program operates in the black. But we also, because we receive USDA funding, food service funds, when we operate in the black, that money can't go anywhere besides food service. So like, we can't take when we operate in the black food service and say, hey, we're going to move that money and do something else with it. It has to be expended in food service, specifically because we're receiving USDA funds within that. So that's, again, been a positive thing. And we continue to get good feedback, both from Airmark as well as survey information on food service. Concerns, uncollectible debt is and will, it seems like this day and age, forever be an issue. And that is not at all specific to our district. In fact, while those numbers are high for our district, I think they are within line of what we're seeing across the board. And so that's just for us to continue to find, you know, new ways to try and collect those debts while maintaining positive relationships with our, with our parents. Ultimately, we want to feed kids and we want to make sure that they have what they need to be successful during the school day. And it's just us finding creative ways to make sure that we're getting those balances paid. So that's a concern. Free and reduced meal application, this says submission, continue, I kind of over to this, decreased drastically at the secondary level. And I should say, decreased drastically at the secondary level in comparison to our elementary numbers. So it's not like our secondary levels are decreasing year after year after year, but pretty consistently, as our kids that are qualified at the elementary level, as they move up into secondary, we start to see less forms turn in and our rate decreases, even though in theory, they're the same kids that were qualified two or three years ago at the elementary level. So I think that's something for us to continue to look at and address. And then a large concern is just uncertainty with federal funding specific to the USDA. There's been talk, like with community eligibility provision, which is not something that we operate, but there's been talk about changing the threshold on that, which would impact districts across the state. So CACFP is a So CACFP is a program that's really significant for us if they started having conversations there. And those would be concerns of programs that we're running that include federal reimbursement dollars that we have no control over. And so we'll continue, I think, as a, as a district to advocate at the state and local level for those programs because they are really significant for our kids, but we also recognize that those could be concerns that we have no control over. Recommendations moving forward, we want to continue to look at how we can increase our free and reduced meal applications, not only at the secondary level, but as elementary as well. If we can at all reduce that burden on our families and make sure that our kids are getting fed, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to do that. We want to maintain a positive relationship with Airmark, again, for the benefit of our kids. We want to look at audit of existing equipment. We've got new equipment in several schools, but we need to look at if we have equipment that is reaching end of life, that we have a plan for replacing that. Dr. Bulmer referred to a similar thing with HVAC systems. We, similar things exist within the kitchen, it exists everywhere. In the automotive industry, I had some squirrel damage in my car that was $2,000, and I was like, I feel like five years ago this would have been $500. So we see that with freezers, with ovens, anything that you can think of. Prices continue to escalate, and so we want to make sure that we're doing an audit and have a plan for the things that we need to do there. And then continue to do things to maximize student participation in the programs, not because it benefits the district, but because we feel like it benefits our kids. With that, I would again recommend that the program evaluation should be approved, and I'm open to answer any questions.
All right. I entertain a motion to, for approval of the food service program evaluation. So first by Darren.
Second.
Second by Jill. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
Can you tell us what the uncollected balances were for last year, or like, you say it's in line with, you know, all districts? It does seem to be a topic that comes up at the end of the school year often, that we're chasing that, and so can we talk to that just a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So specific to like where we're at, we ended last year just north of $33,000 in negative meal balances. Those roll to the, to the following year for obviously anyone that's not going off in terms of seniors. So we are currently this year at $48,000 negative, which again, Dr. Bulmer, I talked, is about in line with where we've been previously. Across the board, I know that when we, when we start to escalate, we have most of the districts around us that look, that they are in the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's a problem, it was a problem at previous districts that I've been a part of. It's, it's a problem that exists everywhere. I think it has been exacerbated post-COVID, when we went through a window where we were paying for meals. And districts are also in a difficult position where we're going to feed kids. And so when we have parents that push that, we're going to feed kids. And so that's a difficult thing, and that's where I said it really is us finding creative ways to try and partner, not only with parents, but with local partners in, in making sure that we do that, because at the end of the day, it's not a fourth grader's fault that their parents, you know, don't have the money or are unwilling to pay, and so we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can. So it is, it's an issue that we will continue to manage, but the issue for us, I think, falls in line with where other districts are at and what they're experiencing.
And then you, you referenced several times that we operate in the black. I do recall when we were going through our budget that this is one of the largest line items on the budget, but I, I don't know that I do recall that it was in the black as it relates to the budget that was presented. Do you, do you guys recall that? If you don't, it's okay, but we talked about it a lot being in the black.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember exactly how it was presented or what it is in the budget. I know that because food service money and those USD funds can only be used on food service as Mr. Gilkey alluded to, the state actually runs a report on that and tells you that you're running in the black and how much you're running in black, you need to spend some of this money, which is why we were able to use that to essentially pay for the new kitchen and equipment at the new Lewis, and why as we look at things that need to be replaced like coolers and stuff, we can use those funds to do that. It's also why in years past, we've paid for every student to eat all through testing. Like it's, it's fantastic, it's something that we love to celebrate. That's the only bad part about running in the black is you can only use it for that, which is great, we're going to make sure every kid gets fed, but that's, that's kind of where it's at. And it's, the difficult part with it is it's hard to predict. We don't know how many kids are going to eat, we don't know how many of those CACFPs we're going to serve. So a lot of times predicting that in the budget may seem as a equal or a little less or a little more when it comes to net, but at the end of the year, it's always net positive and we get that report back from the state, same as such.
Yeah, I know it's a balance. For me, I'm one that does think that an excellent scoring is a little steep in my, my individual opinion on the program. I also think that if we do run in the black and we do have opportunity, like I think the sum of the quality, I understand the sustainability that we have for the, for the district based on like the food that we can have to provide. I just think where the middle school, my middle schooler thinks that his meals are fantastic, you know, and he loves his options that he gets. I do think at the elementary school, when I look at the menus, I'm kind of like, you know, I have one that loves to eat at the elementary school and one that wants to take her lunch every day. And so I, I just wonder about some of the meal options that show up. So one, that's just personal, but I don't think I'm the only one in that space that shares that, that opinion. And then also, I, I know because I had the benefit of getting to work in the building for a couple of years, the importance to our district of filling out the forms, I don't know that it's, that our community understands the value of that, and if our community can just take the time, even if it is on a decline, no, our district does benefit from those forms being filled out. And I just, I don't, before I worked in the building, I didn't understand that. And also there's a lot of benefit that can come to families by taking the time to do that.
Yeah, I, I can allude on that. You're welcome to, to Mr. Gilkey. I would say to echo that comment is those free and reduced forms do far more for our district than just provide free meals. What it does is it paints a picture of the socioeconomic diversity within our community. So for instance, the way, the reason that we're able to do the CACFP dinner plans is because we have certain schools that fall within a high range of free and reduced meals. There's also, our funding is positively impacted when you have lower socioeconomic numbers. So having more free and reduced families means the state reimburses us more per student. You're also eligible for E-Rate, which is, you know, grants and reimbursements that you can get from the state for technology type resources. So to your point, there are things that, that benefit our school and our community way beyond just an individual student getting a free meal when we can fill those plans out. So I would echo that and ask anyone that's watching, if you've not filled out your free and reduced form, please fill that out. I know our wonderful principals in the, in the stands would love to be able to check off your name and make sure that we got that form, but it does help both our community and our school when we get those turned in.
And one other thing that I thought was interesting working in the district was that when I was a kid, if you had a different lunch, like if you were free or reduced, you had a different colored card or something. It was, there was a very clear identifier. And in today's world, that is not the case, people don't know, and so if you're a family that might be struggling, and, but you worry about that stigma for your student and you're just choosing to go through the struggle, just please know that those students are protected in the space with, there are no identifiers that their peers would know unless they chose to tell them.
So a couple of things, I think just to address some of the concern there, and, and not at all that I have an issue with anyone taking exception to an excellent rating, but just to, I think, provide some clarification. Specific to budget, we talked about, we would definitively know, and we do at this point after the audit, that we operated in the black for the previous year, and so why we would have a pretty good idea of that, when the budget was originally submitted, we wouldn't have gone through the audit at that point to note, I think definitively. And so that's where I think it probably is presented without it, without that like being stated upfront, because we're waiting on the audit to confirm what we are seeing on our end. So there is that. I do think, again, going to how some of those excess funds that, that we have are used, or what we can do with those, and our CACFP meals really drive a lot of that. But specific to, I think, I don't know if quality difference, but preferential difference, especially like middle school to elementary, one of the things that I think most people wouldn't understand is the nutritional content that we're required to serve by age level. And so like my kids were telling me like, the pizza's better at the middle school. I'm like, you guys, the pizza is the same, and it's not the same at the middle school. It's different because the nutritional content for what they can serve at an age level differs, both in like caloric content, but also in like sodium level. And so there was a lot of talk this past year about like new sodium requirements and, and like, we're not going to be able to serve the cheeseburgers that we serve currently, and like, we don't know how to take more sodium out of them. And so a lot of times at the elementary level, it's really more of an issue with nutritional content and what we're able to serve at that age level, as opposed to like, we don't want to spend the money to, to, to like serve what the middle school is serving. A lot of times it's because nutritionally, we can't legally serve that, but when we get to dealing with kids that are a little bit older, we have a little bit more room in terms of nutritional content to do that. So not that that's not something we continue to explore, but I think just to provide some background or context for why that happens at times is because by age level, we look at different requirements. And then I think specific to free and reduced forms, again, that's where I think your point is exactly right. Like we have to find a way to educate our families about the importance of that, that goes beyond just their students eating for free, that's a great thing for them, and I think communicating how that operates now, that there's not that stigma around it, but also communicating to our families the impact that it has throughout the district. So I think for us, as a leadership team, that's just figuring out how we educate families to start to kind of change that. So I think that's going to be, not that it hasn't been, but will be a continued priority for us.
I think that everybody's doing a great job. I just think that the way that our program evaluations as a whole, I think it's a larger conversation, are set up with one, two, three, four, five, you know, and to say that you get a five doesn't mean that you shouldn't have an opportunity for more, like, I don't know, the scale just is really tight, and it's hard for me to think that we're at the best that we can be.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We have a first and a second on the table. Fall to us if you're in favor. Six opposed. One. You need to extend. But I don't, then I just want to get caught up. All right, um, for the board, don't forget, um, the 23rd is Board Pictures, 5 o'clock?
Yes.
5 o'clock right here? And then 5:30 is the text right here?
Yes.
Okay. So no rescheduling this time. Be here, be square. So get your hair did up. Kenny, get your hair did up. All right. This time I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
First by Jill. Second. Second by Darren. All those in favor? That passes 7 to 0. Have a great night. Thanks for coming up. Thanks for giving us your five minutes.